Fourth, 2024, it is 7:00 PM. And I gladly welcome all of you here in our room. Also, anyone watching on YouTube, either now or later during streaming. We are joined today by Director Polis, Director Carter, Director Spencer. We're also joined by Superintendent Yunowski, War Secretary Cassandra Quam, and two of our students, representatives Vanessa Rosas Miguel and Gerardo Castañeda Lopez. Welcome. I'm Paula Cole. And let's go toward this meeting. Is anyone ready to move the agenda for approval this evening?
I'll move the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Carter. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and our agenda is approved. We now move on to information and proposals, non-action items from Superintendent Yunowski.
All right, so there are two items on the superintendent's agenda. So we are going to begin by bringing up Amy Scarry-Clacker, Director of Community Ed, for a presentation and update on the programs we have in our Community Ed Department. And then also, I will be providing a fall update, including answering a couple of the questions from board members from before. So take it away, Amy.
All right, thank you for having me. Good evening, Superintendent Yunowski, Chairful, and members of the board. So I'm here today to present to you about Richfield Community Education. Thank you. I'm here to present to you today about Richfield Community Education. My name's Amy Scarry-Clacker. I'm the Director of Community Ed, as well as Administrator at the Central Education Center. I know this is supposed to be a short presentation. So with the time I have, I want to tell you a bit today about community education programs, our participants, how community education is funded, and also tell you a bit about some of our current programming highlights. So first, just a little bit about community ed. There is a community education program in all 326 school districts in Minnesota. So that makes it a statewide delivery system for some of our programs, such as early childhood family education, adult basic education, and enrichment, and recreational opportunities. It's funded in a separate fund from our general district fund programming. And in order to access community ed funding, a district must have two things. It must have a licensed director, and it must have a representative advisory council that meets at least four times a year. And our advisory council is small but active. And we have membership that includes program participants, parents of school-aged children, parents of children that are in early learning programs, a representative from MIRA Resources, a representative from the city of Richfield, and a member of the school board, which is Director Cole. Our community education is rooted in the concept of lifelong learning. We have many different programs that happen at different times of the year and in different places, but they can be looked at in three major categories. We have adult programs. If you've flipped through one of our community ed books, you've probably seen our adult enrichment programs. It's one of the main highlights of our catalog. We have a lot of different programming, but because that, the catalog that goes to the community is one of the only ways we can reach adults, we really do highlight our adult enrichment in that program. Whereas our youth programs, we will put in the catalog as well, but we know we have access to getting that information out through schools and Parents Square and things like that as well. Our adult enrichment program consists of classes for adults with topics such as art, fitness, dance, cooking, and more. And these programs are fee-based, and we had around 820 adults register for these programs in the last year. And then the other adult programs to mention, you all know this because you sign our joint powers agreements for our two consortium programs. But for anyone else watching, they may not know about Adult Basic Ed or Adults with Disabilities. Adult Basic Education, or ABE, as people call it, is offered in Bloomington as well as in Richfield, but Bloomington is the fiscal host for our consortium between Bloomington, Richfield, Edina, and Eden Prairie. And they offer general education development, so GED programs, adult diploma programs, English classes for learners whose primary language is not English, and career pathway courses. And we have about 60 Richfield adults per year who do activities with Metro South. And a lot of them are in English learning classes here in Richfield, either at Central or at Centennial Elementary School. And then Adults with Disabilities is smaller, but similar. Bloomington and Richfield pool the amount they receive from the state for adults with disabilities in order to serve adults with disabilities in both. And I believe we serve around 20 adults, but those, there's probably more registrations than the same 20 who sign up for lots of different programs in Richfield with that program. So those are our adult programs. And then next, we have youth programs. Whoops, that's still on this page. So Community Ed also offers a large variety of youth programs. We offer some preschool age enrichment, family events and programs, lots of elementary age enrichment. We're able to offer elementary age classes right after school, at school, which is great for families. We have driver education, Spartan sports camps, middle school, high school, aquatics, a lot of different programs that serve youth in our community. All of our programs are supported and vetted by our Community Ed coordinators. And one of their roles is to, as they're looking for instructors and as they're maybe partnering with different organizations to bring in, is to make sure that our youth programs create intentional and meaningful opportunities for kids to learn skills, and also are a fun place for students to meet friends and build relationships with peers and other adults. And that's about 2,100 enrollments per year. One other thing about youth programs, most of our youth programs are fee-based. There are scholarships available through Richfield Ready, which is our scholarship program. But these scholarships are limited per student per year because they come from a very limited pot of money. And we know fees can be a barrier for some families. We're always looking for ways to continue to support more youth scholarship funding. And then third is early learning. Community education plays a big role in our early learning programs. Our preschool programs have braided funding. So VPK, or Voluntary Pre-Kindergarten, comes in through the general fund and is primarily how our four-year-old preschool is funded. And then the funding that supports three-year-old preschool and ECFE comes in through the Community Education Fund. So braids those two together for early learning. A little bit about ECFE, or Early Childhood Family Education. That offers classes for parents with children birth to five. A typical class involves the kids, the time with parent and child together, and then times where the kids are with an ECFE teacher. And then the parents go with a parent educator to learn about parenting and also just make relationships with other parents, with kids of similar ages. We know parents are a child's first and most important teacher. And so we think this program is really important. And Minnesota Research has found that parents involved in ECFE are more likely to be involved in school throughout their child's whole school career. So we think that's really important for our district as well. Demographics of our youth programs, hopefully you can see those there. Community education is intended to serve our whole community. So something we have to look at and pay attention to is the data around who is utilizing our programs. These numbers are a snapshot of enrollment data from the past year. So, and the numbers in the gray column are the community percentages from Minnesota Compass. Those come directly from the 2020 census and really only get updated every 10 years when there's a new census. You can see our early learning programs are the most diverse, followed by youth, and then by adult. You'll notice the Minnesota Compass numbers also, which are the gray, they reflect our census numbers, but they are also less diverse than our student, our Richfield Public Schools student numbers, where BIPOC students make up around 70% of our district population. So usually, when we're looking at our early learning and youth programs, we are more likely to compare to the district numbers. And when we're looking at adult, we're more likely to compare to that Minnesota Compass. I think the difference with the Minnesota Compass numbers is really due to full community numbers, the whole census is reflecting all ages. And older residents of Richfield are more likely than, or a higher percentage white than younger, which is true in Minnesota as a whole as our state changes. But, and with an average participant age of about 50 in our adult programs, I think that's one of the reasons that those programs are less diverse. However, they still don't fully reflect our community. So we know we have work to do in our programming. My team's united in a goal to try to ensure our programs mirror the community at large. Some of the ways we have focused and continue to focus on making sure programs are open and accessible are having a bilingual presence at Central for registration questions, as well as offering bilingual class offerings. We've been partnering with MIRA Resources. And also just, we kind of keep reminding ourselves of the importance of trying new things. We're a very small team, and we have some popular classes that just continue to fill and will probably continue to still offer those. But we know that offering the same thing and expecting different results doesn't make any sense. So we need to try out different offerings, explore different avenues for programming in order to meet different needs. And then we're going to talk a little bit about community ed funding. Got a little pie chart here. So the community education budget's about a $2 million budget as a whole. So it's about 2% of the full district budget. So it's pretty small. It is separate from the School District General Fund. It has its own revenue streams and must cover its own costs. The pie chart shows you the different revenue streams that come in under the '04 fund. So you've got the blues are kind of our general community ed, and then the red, yellow, orange, and pinkish, I guess, are early learning. And then the purple is participant fees. So about 20% of our community ed revenue does come in from participant fees. And then if you pull out the early learning state revenue, which is the next slide, you can really see how that general ed side of the general community ed budget is reliant on participant fees and runs a little bit more like a business. The general ed part of the community ed is where our enrichment and recreational programs live, such as adult and youth classes. And that part of the budget is over 40% funded by participant fees. And then the third slide gives you a little snapshot of what our expenses are. This is all, not just, this is general and early learning together. So you can see that over 85% of that is staff and instructors. That includes a community ed director, coordinators, office staff, instructors, some of our early learning teachers. And then other costs include things like custodial, utilities, catalogs, marketing, registration software, credit card fees, and supplies. And then since I typically only visit the school board once a year, I wanted to also just share a few highlights from some programming from the last year. One of the highlights is the support that we've been given from Best Buy for Central and our early learning programs. The last time I was here, I told you about how Best Buy donated money a year or so ago to help us put in an outdoor classroom at Central. There's pictures of it there on the right. That space has been being used very regularly by preschool and ECFE classes, as well as Head Start classrooms that lease space at Central. And I've even had a couple of our evening adult classes out there to do yoga on the patio. So people are using it, which is great. And then in addition to that, Best Buy sent volunteers to Central to support teachers during our setup week. They did a supply drive and brought free backpacks, supplies. And we received another large monetary donation for a few specific programs. The first was to allow us to continue to offer transportation for our family school program. Family School is a partnership between ECFE and then Metro South, which is our Adult Basic Ed program. And it's targeted to students or to families with children zero to five who are learning English. And we have 20 families enrolled in Family School this year. They come twice a week, every week. The kids go to preschool or to a rich birth to three program, while the adults go to their English class. So many of the families who need transportation in order to get to class two days a week. So we weren't able to figure out a bus, so we offer Uber rides for people to get there every week. And that has been paid for by Best Buy right now. Best Buy also donated money for family events. We are using that for some of the, we've had family events that are fee-based, but we wanted to keep the cost low, that we were using some other grant funding to supplement. And so we'll do that. But since they gave us a little even more than we asked for for family events, which was great, we also are offering three different literacy-based family events this year for free. One of these events will be an event in February where families can see a show by Heart of the Beast Mask and Puppet Theater, as well as Make a Large Dragon Puppet. And between the support of Family School, which is literacy-based, and these free literacy-based family events, we're putting their donation towards things that directly support literacy, which is district priority, so. And then finally, their donation also included 4,000 for Richfield Ready scholarships, which allow us to offer more scholarships for youth programs. Another highlight of the last couple of years, actually, has been our theater opportunities. The last two summers, we've offered a large theater camp for students in grades second through eight. And this camp has been able to serve around 65 students each summer. And we typically actually have a waitlist. So we're looking for ways to expand to accommodate more students next summer. Nate Edwards, who directs our high school plays, runs the camps. And that just makes it our even more amazing community feel because he recruits high school students to come in and help with things like the lighting or backstage help and helping the students run through scripts. So that's been a really great partnership. And then we've also had requests for more theater opportunities after school and non-school days. So we've been able to offer those through an organization called Character Kids. And that has been one of our more popular after-school enrichment offerings in the last couple of years. And then the last highlight I want to share is about our aquatics program. Our swimming lesson program has about 500 enrollments each year. And the majority of those enrollments come in the summer. It's a pretty big summer program. And in the summer of 2023, we had a dire staffing shortage, and we ended up canceling almost a third of our lessons due to either not being able to have a lifeguard or not enough staff to teach the lessons. And I'm really happy to report that while staffing is still a challenge, we have a larger number of staff. And in this past summer, we didn't have to cancel any lessons due to staffing. So that was amazing. One factor in staffing is a lifeguard grant that we received in partnership with the city of Richfield. And this has allowed us to offer lifeguard training free of charge for the last couple of years. And we've also used this grant to bring our lifeguard pay rates up to be a little more competitive with other jobs kids might get. Some other new things that are going on in aquatics are, our new aquatics coordinator has enhanced our swimming lesson curriculum by adding water safety components at each level. We're adding an adult lesson for the first time in a few years this winter. We get requests for it often. I wouldn't say often, we get quite a few requests for it. But that's been one of those when we had so few staff, we wanted to prioritize the kids because those lessons fill all the time. But we feel like we're in a place where we can try the adult lessons. And then the other really cool thing about aquatics I just want to mention is that most of the staff we hire to lifeguard and teach lessons are students themselves. And so there is a bit of a youth development opportunity here. And like, you know, for many kids, this is their first job. And it's a good opportunity to be a role model for younger students and to teach the skills that they know, as well as learn responsibility of having a job. So those are some of our highlights. I also want to say it's important that I shout out to my team at Community Ed. I'm here talking, but these programs wouldn't happen without them. It's because of their work that they're thriving. We're a fairly small team, but they're really getting it done. We have great coordinators, organized and hard-working office staff, and outreach workers that help us keep Community Ed and Central running smoothly and feeling welcoming. So that's what I have for you. Do you have questions for?
Sure. I'm going to, thank you, as always. I've got in my head a bunch about the aquatics. I'm curious, it's so, I don't know if your numbers reflected, the aquatics have fallen to the youth and adult programs?
Yeah.
I'm just curious specifically about, just in the top of my head, like minority participation in swimming lessons, right? It's like, I want to be careful, but stereotypes, right? It's like there are stereotypes about, just like, some groups just are, I don't know, culturally, whatever it is, that the parents are like, we don't swim. We don't go and swim, we don't do swimming lessons. Is there anything to like, try to encourage participation?
Probably, you know, not beyond trying to get it out there and letting people know about it. I will say our, they're still not as diverse as our community numbers, but if you break down swimming lessons, they are probably a more diverse component of our program. But it might be, it might be more Latino population. I'd have to look. I have looked at the numbers, but I don't know them off the top of my head.
And then along those lines, do we like advertise like at the pool that there's swimming lessons available?
We should. You mean at the Richfield pool? At the city pool? No, but that's a great idea.
I'm just curious. Again, I'm walking by and I'm like, oh, I wish I could swim. You know, it's like, and I don't think necessarily I know about it.
Well, and the city pool is really supportive of us wanting to have really good lessons because they see it, you know, if kids jump in the water and aren't able to swim. Their lifeguards are getting involved, so I think that's a really great idea.
Yeah, just throwing it out there. Again, as I read through this, I'm like, that's one of the things that came to mind. And then back to the numbers. So it doesn't look like they all tally up to 100?
They might not 100%.
I was trying to get ahead of Tim because I figured he'd be asking the question if I didn't. So, right, it's, I want to beat him to the punch. So if they don't, and we've got multiracial down there, that would be my guess is the, unless there's another other category.
Well, what we also have in Community Ed is prefer not to answer.
Ah, okay.
Which is always a little bit hard. So in the past, I've put a prefer not to answer category. And then based on some other ways that we tally numbers for different reports, the other way to do it is to take all the prefer not to answers and put them at the same percentage. So you take your, everyone without the prefer not to answer, figure out what that percentage is, and then make those fall into those categories. And that's what I did with this one. But that should still add up to 100 because if I'm doing a straight-up percentage.
Rounding.
Rounding, thanks.
Rounding.
Appreciate that. Well, actually, and then maybe this is a question for one of the administrators, or you, that you can answer it. I know that this question comes up when we talk about state and federal tracking and the differences between the two. And I don't know if there's consistency in the way in which we ask that question. I'm guessing there is, because there's some cases that we have to ask for federal, some that we have to ask for state. But then what if, like, in your case, you don't need to ask for either? We're just asking because we're curious. Which one do we default to? Does that make sense, the way I'm asking?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we have to. We do it for this reason, is to try to see if our programs are mirroring the community. But it is, and the best way for us to do it is to ask it as a question on every registration. Because if you rely on people to put it, to fill it in kind of their profile, a lot of people don't put it in. So I do think that what happens a little bit with our prefer not to answer is it's repetitive. So say you've signed up for 10 things a year, and you get asked every time, you might just start clicking prefer not to answer.
Sure.
But yeah, it's not really required for our reporting, except for in ECFE. I believe it is required in our ECFE report.
I will blame Jennifer Smith on this and the fact that it's like, kind of, she made the comment that like, everything's data-driven decisions. And I'm like, so how do we make sure that we're standardizing the way in which we ask these questions so that we're getting consistent data so that we can use it for decision-based, yeah. Thank you, appreciate it.
Could I ask, you said some programs fill and some, you know, are there programs that you wish you could run more or at a lower threshold of participation? And what would it take to offer things more broadly? Because sometimes, you know, you won't get the full participation in year one, but you might if we run it. So are there ideas that, for programs that you think would eventually be very popular if we could just invest in them for?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say most of the limitations are not necessarily that we can't, you know, because we're fee-based and we put the fees into whatever it costs to run it, we can kind of try a lot of things. Where we mostly have trouble is space. So like, we could run more swimming lessons, but during the school year, it's hard to get space in the pool. So we're limited to some Saturdays here and there when there's no tournaments or things going on. It's not called a tournament. What's it called?
Meets.
A meet. Thanks. I knew that was wrong. So then we get limited there. And then a lot of it too is like finding the right instructor. You know, like, whenever we've offered pottery, I guarantee you it's filled in like a day. But we haven't been able to find someone who consistently wants to teach pottery, you know? So like, there's certain things that are really popular, but if you don't find the right person, or like, the main place you could offer it is here at the high school, and using the wheels and kiln here, which works, but at certain times of the year, it doesn't work because they need to load the kiln for pottery classes. I mean, you have the time, the niche times that work, and then you need to find the instructor that it works during that time. So it's kind of not just a limitation on like, oh, I had this idea. It's more like, can you find the right person and do you have the right space? Those are probably the biggest end my, I mean, like, you can't pay full-time people to come in. So it's, we're trying to find part-timers who can teach here and there in a little bit.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for sharing this. I think one of the things that I really enjoy about coming to visit Central and the community education is that a lot of the staff you have are from this community. And so it reflects Richfield very well. I really appreciate that. Back to the demographics question on here. Is the Min Compass, is that full community or is that adults? Because I'm wondering if we're really only using that number to compare to adult enrichment, if maybe it might be.
If it's from the census, it should be.
Then it'd be everybody.
Should be everybody.
Yep. And so maybe it's that we are closer to the adult community if we're comparing adult enrichment to the community. Just a thought there. I also had a question about aquatics. Is there, are there youth lessons for like middle schoolers and high schoolers? Or is it primarily young kids? And now you've got some adult classes?
We say that the lessons are open to those who are like up to 15.
Okay.
But I would say in practice, we don't get a lot of older students.
Yeah.
And one thing, I know our coordinator was working on this. She had a couple kids who signed up who were older and trying to make sure that we, when she's noticed that, staffed it as appropriately as possible, knowing there's also five-year-olds in the same lesson. You know, putting an extra helper in there and maybe having them go to a different lane. Or, I mean, we do our best to make sure that works. But I think it would be nice to offer teen lessons so that you aren't the only teen in the lesson.
And it's primarily learn to swim, not necessarily, you know, how to stay alive in a pool.
Yeah, it's mostly focused, I mean, really, the curriculum was really focused on learning the four strokes that you would, if you were going to be in swimming. And then we've added that water safety component too. Because obviously, for some, it's just, a lot of people, I think, who take swimming lessons, they just want their kid to learn how to swim.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
But a lot of our staff are on the swim team.
Great.
So that's been pretty fun. Like, this last summer, they would do, you know, maybe like some of the staff would race at the end of a lesson on the last day. And it was during the Olympics too, so people were pretty like jazz about all that.
That's fun. Cool, thanks, Amy.
We have no more questions, comments? Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Continue to enjoy all of the great things happening. We are very grateful for all of that. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, second presentation is just an amalgam of the questions that you all have asked and some of the things that we have done this fall. So just kind of providing an update on some of the things since we are shockingly already two months into school. And just talking about some of the things that we have done and that have occurred in those first two months. So just a reminder, it was now already seven weeks. Um, so just a reminder, it was now already seven weeks ago, we took, um, we made a decision as a board to cap, um, non-resident student enrollment for the rest of the school year. And so I just wanted to provide you, um, an update on the impact of that decision. We're still a hundred and forty-two students above projection, um, for grades K-12. So there actually has not been a significant change, um, in our open, or in our overall enrollment. I believe we were down seven students at this time, or an approximate of one per week, or right around that number. Uh, average class sizes did decrease at Centennial and Sheridan since the action was taken, so there has been some shifting around. Um, and we will give a full report in the where we are in enrollment. But just to give the board a look at where we are across, um, across our elementary buildings, um, because secondary schools are able to juggle class sizes and shift people in a different way than our elementaries. Uh, lowest average, um, across the building is at twenty-three and a quarter at Centennial, highest average is twenty-four point seven one. Um, just as a reminder, we are funding classroom sizes at the elementary at an average of twenty-five, um, with an average of twenty-three at Centennial. And so we are right within that window, but again, still near those top class sizes that we want. One of the things we also talked about is we're pretty excited to have no class size above twenty-eight. Um, and then we also don't have our class sizes on average below twenty. So it's really in that nice number. Um, and it's been successful so far. Um, so we're very pleased with the decision and that it hasn't had a negative impact on our overall enrollment. And so we're excited to continue, uh, continue that direction. We had a question about direct admission, and so just sharing with the public, the direct admission allows our high school students to receive notification early fall. Um, there are participating colleges that offer them enrollment just based on their high school performance. Uh, students who are on track to graduate receive that list, um, and then they can choose to officially participate. Um, and then make a selection of that school. Um, and so in twenty-two, twenty-three, a hundred and sixteen students participated or chose um, to go to one of the direct admission schools or take that as the opportunity. On twenty-three, twenty-four, um, a hundred and seven students participated. I just got an update earlier today, I believe seventy-six students currently have already figured out, um, that they are planning to go to one of the direct admission schools. And so that's exciting for some of our high school seniors. Uh, some students are still, um, in the decision process. Um, and again, you can apply and be enrolled even if you didn't fill out that interest form. It's just then selecting that school. We also wanted to give the public just sort of a, a breadth, because there are four-year schools, there are two-year schools, there are public schools and private schools. So just some of the examples, um, of our most attended schools, uh, Normandale, Augsburg, Minnesota State, St. Paul College, University of St. Thomas, Hamlin, those are all colleges that participate in that process. Um, and so we just wanted to make sure to share that information, uh, both with the board and publicly. We also had some questions about board policy updates and wanted to share how we follow that process, but also then talk a little bit about some of the policies that are upcoming, um, and see what that, uh, might look like. Some policies, just those that are based solely on statute, they much might have a cabinet review or be small. Uh, some might go out to staff departments or advisory committees, student board reps, um, or family groups, or larger groups like Ed Richfield, or our attorneys. And so we just have a set of different people, um, who do take a look at that. Uh, we do have a special group, Safe and Supportive Schools. They do meet four times a year. Um, that includes parents and guardians, high school, RSEP and RMS students, um, we do have staff working with them. Um, but we wanted to just lay out that there is a pretty significant investment in the timeframe in there. Um, there's about fifteen hours facilitated those meetings, uh, six to eight hours of prep, um, but then also recruitment and outreach that occurs. So it's not just a happenstance. Um, there's a lot of prep, there's a lot of partnership that works, um, in connection to having those go well. Last year, there was an additional group at RHS organized for additional student feedback because there was a large number of policies that Safe and Supportive couldn't get to. Uh, one of the challenges of that group is pulling students out of class, um, and so we're hoping not to utilize that group. Um, and it's not in our plans unless we, um, end up needing more, more policy review than we are able to get through with our Safe and Supportive Schools group. We did want to give you an example of what some of those policy reviews look like and where they go to different groups. Uh, grad requirements and commencement participation, um, and so that'll go to the RHS Administration and Counseling Team. Um, but we also, um, will be gathering that from Safe and Supportive Schools and taking a look because there are some questions of which we definitely want to get multiple perspectives on. Uh, professional boundaries in addition to Safe and Supportive Schools, um, education Richfield and our attorneys. Um, and so I'm not going to read through all of the policies, but I just wanted to give you that list and some of the groups that we'll be consulting, um, as part of that participation. I'll just point out one of the very simple ones. So if you look near the bottom, seven, ten petty cash fund. Uh, so that'll go to the finance department, and then if need be, we'll check with our attorney. Um, but again, there are very small policies, um, that have just very tight regulation changes, and then those that are, we just need that larger perspective on. Um, and so that sums up what we do for policy reviews. And then celebrations, it's been a great fall. Um, we want to start with, and a couple of our high school students, Adriana Mathiason and Cameron Spencer, um, were named twenty-twenty-four National Merit Scholarship Commended Students, so we congratulate those two students for making our, our school system proud. Eleventh grader Signe Laney qualified for state and cross-country. Um, we've had native students and families participating in events, including moccasin workshops and author visit, Native American College Fair and the second annual, just last weekend, annual RHS powwow. Uh, we had on October eighteenth, over seven hundred alumni gathered at the all-class reunion sock hop and tour of the high school to celebrate seventy years of Richfield High School being in existence. We administered vaccinations to over three hundred and forty-eight staff at the vaccine clinics at our schools. Matt Mullenbach, high school math teacher, was inducted into the Minnesota Basketball Coaches Hall of Honor. Uh, Jonathan Hayer named Partner of the Year by Beacon's Network. And so we had a lot to celebrate and we continue to hear things about, about team members and students and community members who have wonderful things to, to celebrate and participate in. And just a brief looking ahead, we have fall conferences coming up this week for our elementary students. Uh, we have a November eighth Professional Day, we've got the Romeo and Juliet High School Play, and then winter sports will be beginning in the very near future. Um, we have a cute little photo from our woodshop class at Richfield Middle School. So with that, I will stop and see if there are questions or follow-up on any of those things that we just talked about.
Thank you.
I, I just have a follow-up. I, I had asked about direct admissions, and so within that slide, when we say in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, a hundred and sixteen RHS students participated in the program, that means they gained entry to a school via direct admissions and then enrolled at one of those schools?
And then selected one of those schools to go to, yes.
So many more of our students gained entry into one of the schools and maybe took advantage of it or maybe went somewhere else.
Correct. How it works is, um, we only receive information from our students. So the student's decision of where they, um, we do send out paperwork to where people apply. Um, but where a student chose to accept, uh, that is the student's data and their decision with what they want to do with that.
Right. And one, one of the interesting things is with it, within this program, they, they haven't necessarily chosen to apply yet. They just get news that if they do apply, they will certainly be, um, accepted if they, if they are already directed.
Correct, correct.
So that's great, that's.
It's a wonderful program, and it's, uh, definitely allows, uh, students to access with a different level of effort.
And confidence and, and, and I would have to think less stress.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you.
So then, I guess I'll follow up on that because I'm trying to make sure that I'm clear. Because students can then choose to officially participate in the direct admissions by filling out an interest form. So if we rewind, every student gets notified of the schools that would accept them if they're on track to graduate.
Correct.
And then if I'm interested, so then I'm saying if I want to apply.
Work with the counseling department to say, okay, I'm interested, I want to go forward with that. So it isn't, you're forced to those schools, you then have to actually take a very small step of action in that scenario.
To the specific schools that you're interested in.
Correct.
So it is not an application for the schools, just saying, yes, I'm, it's just responding, yes, I want to go to the school. It's less.
No, you still have to apply. So, so the, my, my, my child went through it last year and, and you, you get a letter that says, here's a list of schools that you are, that you will certainly be admitted to, should you fill out the formal application. And within the program, I believe there's a discounted or free application if you go follow it through this system. And so that removes some cost and some barrier.
Yeah.
But you, you're told that if you formally apply within the timeframe, you will certainly be admitted.
Yeah.
Thank you. So you, you still have to apply. And, and, and missing from your list were, were a number of, I, I didn't see it, there were a number of technical schools also on the list. So it's, it's private and, and public, four-year schools, it's private and public, two-year schools and tech.
It's a long list.
It's a long list, it's great.
And those dates? For applying? I mean, I just, I, I share just because again, a, as a parent of a current senior, right? It's like, I was kind of surprised here, like, in my head, I had, oh, we've got to have this done by end of December, right? And it's like, and it's National Acceptance Day, like, May first. Like, oh, okay, well then, then my question would be is like, and I know I've talked to Stacy about this, but it's like, how well does everybody kind of know, like, the application period? How long do students have to apply? Kind of to Tim's point of, I'm told these schools are interested in me, how long do I have to get there?
That's, that's what the guidance department will help them with.
Yes, we have the guidance department continuing to meet with students. Um, they actually have allotted and scheduled their Wednesdays, um, and with our win time Wednesdays, and they are following up and meeting with senior students. You can help me out here.
Resident expert.
I forgot what I was going to say.
Did, did you get the list?
Yeah, I got the list. I was going to say, like, I think there's not a lot of like, I feel like there should be more like, like you were talking about, like dates and like knowing when to do things and things like that. Because I have no idea when anything's due right now. I'm just kind of winging it and hoping for the best. You know what I mean?
I would assume that each school has their own.
Yeah.
Um, timeline.
Yeah.
So there's, there's early admission, a lot of schools close the end of October, some are mid-November, some are December. Some of the schools in Minnesota were free to apply in October, but now that it's November, you have to pay for the application fee. But I don't know if these schools are then free because you're already, you've already been pre-admitted.
I feel like when we go to our senior classes again this year, that we're going to hear a lot of students say they're surprised about dates and that this is a shock to them.
So I watched Dr. Clarkson taking some notes right there. She'll be following up with the counselors tomorrow at the high school to make sure that they are communicating again, um, dates and making sure that we are also specifically following up with Geraldo. Make sure he's just not like out there. Perhaps you've been typing the email now to counselors or the principals.
We don't want Geraldo back next year as a, as a fifty-year senior.
Yes, we want Geraldo on the board, we do not want fifty-year seniors at the high school.
Although it would be wonderful.
Yes.
You can come visit us.
Yeah, we will follow up and make sure that that is getting communicated again and that our board member is getting some extra treatment.
Also, I just want to add one thing. I've, I've been told we're going to have like meetings with our counselors, like where they set up the meeting and everything. But like, I'm wondering why that doesn't happen now when we're actively applying.
They are actually in the process of meeting and working their way through.
Oh, okay.
Um, and so I'm not sure. But I will make, again, we are going to make sure, um, that that is in process.
Sorry, I just had a quick question, but are these colleges like in-state or like ourselves are out-of-state?
So the state of Minnesota has a thing called direct admissions. And so when you become a senior, um, there will be a whole set of schools that you will be told.
Oh, okay.
Guessing based on what I know of your academic record that are going to say, we would love to have you apply, and if you decide to choose us, we will let you in.
Oh, okay, sounds good. I just want to know, like, maybe there's some in South Dakota or nor, I don't know, like, maybe.
They do not have, no, there isn't direct admissions from us to South Dakota. Um, there is the thing called the Common Application, which you can apply and it goes out to a wide range of schools. Um, and those are schools across the country. Um, and those are some of the things that should be, uh, that you'll be working on in advisory over the course of this year.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
So that was the first part. So the next one, um, the, can we go back to that slide, the examples of policy reviews? I think that's what I wanted. Uh, so I think, so to Tim's point, he asked about the previous slides, I asked about this slide. Um, and I think my question was missed. So, um, this is great, showing what, what policies are going to be reviewed by what groups. My question was around, how do we make sure there's consistency in the way in which the groups that were asking to participate and review policies are reviewing them? So for me, I'm part of the athletic committee.
Yeah.
Right? And, uh, when I look and I hear about other examples of other communities and the way in which they've reviewed them are different than the way in which our groups have reviewed them.
Okay.
And so, um, I, I think that there's some opportunity to go ahead and be more thoughtful in the way in which we get that feedback. Right? Because again, I've heard really good things about Safe and Supportive Schools, and then I also look and I'm like, I think we were kind of a little bit behind the ball on, on our committee. Does that make sense?
Yes, so I think what happens for Safe and Supportive Schools is the facilitators read through, well, all of our facilitators with all the groups read through and review the policy, and then, um, I will say, because our Safe and Supportive Schools are working with students or the high school policy was working with students, they tried to pick out the areas of sometimes very long policies to, to specifically gather feedback on the parts that are most of interest. Um, and so what I hear you saying is we can look at making sure the facilitators of these conversations are all trained in implementing a similar process.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I think, because again, it's like, we've gotten good feedback of like how you're doing it. What you just described sounds great. Because the tricky thing I think you're trying to hit is you're sending it to such broad audiences. And like, I know, at least, again, I can speak to my committee in athletics, and that we have, our participation goes up and down. We, we have like two or three core members, but then depending on the issue, like you can get participants from all twenty-seven plus organizations, right? And it's like, how do you disseminate that information to get the feedback? And, and it's sometimes hard to do because it's, if you get feedback from too many people, it becomes challenging as to how do you synthesize it all? But you want to make sure that people are heard.
Okay. We can work on that and make sure that we are orienting a specific process more effectively. Thank you for the clarification.
Are there any other questions or comments about the fall update? Seeing none, move to commendations.
All right, so we have a number of commendations. So first, um, we had our senior night in football, um, with Malaca High School. And after the game, I received an email saying, uh, this was from a Malaca parent, was at the Richfield game, um, and wanted to let you know how impressed I was with your staff, the entire management of the game. It was senior night at Richfield. At halftime, uh, they recognized their senior football players. After they finished, the PA announcer then recognized all the Malaca senior football players. Never seen this done before, and it was extra special to this person as he is a senior this year. Um, you should have heard all the positive comments from the Malaca fans, what a classy move. Then I saw someone from Richfield side carry a box over the Malaca sideline. And after the game, um, my son showed me that the bag was made for him as a senior football player. So while this person wanted us to know how special that was, and he was impressed with the entire evening, and we should be proud of our team and how they represented our school and our community. So congratulations to the football team, adults and students alike. Very impressive for their sportsmanship, um, and congratulations to our seniors. Congratulations to RHS teacher Matt Mullenbach, inducted, um, for the entirety of his twenty-five years coaching boys' basketball and math at RHS, um, to the Minnesota Basketball Coaches Hall of Fame. He's made a lasting impact on his peer students and athletes and was named Assistant Coach of the Year in twenty-seventeen. Um, he also spent three years as an assistant soccer coach, including one conference-winning season. So we're proud to celebrate Matt Mullenbach, his legacy and contributions to our school community. So congratulations, Matt. We'd also like to commend Jonathan Hayer, Director of Extended Learning, who was recently named Partner of the Year by the Beacon's Network. Uh, this award highlights his flexibility, creativity, initiative and communication that have helped our uniquely supportive partnership with Beacons. So thank you to Jonathan for your dedication to Richfield Public Schools, after-school and summer programming, and congratulations, you make us proud. And finally, just a reminder to us all, Employee Appreciation Days, November fifteenth is National School Psychology Week. So we appreciate our school psychologists providing the supports to our students. November fourteenth is National Community Education Day, so congratulations to Director Amy Scarry and the entire community education team. So we're very proud of them. And then November twenty-second is Substitute Educators Day, and so we're grateful for them and the contributions to our reserve teachers because we couldn't run our schools without them. So thank you to all these Richfield School staff members. You are appreciated.
Wonderful. Congratulations, everyone. All right, that ends our information and proposals, non-action items this evening. And now we move on to our consent agenda. Is anyone ready to move the consent agenda for approval?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Director Spencer and a second by Director Carter. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye and our consent agenda is approved. Uh, we're now entering into all business. Policy five-four-seven, student dress and appearance in administrative guideline five-four-seven dot one.
All right, and so this is the third and we believe final appearance. Um, has the updates from our previous, um, previous meetings and also the realignment of, uh, some of the language in regard to our guidelines at, um, Richfield Dual Language School. And so. And so, there were no significant changes, just removing gendered language, making sure that we are clarifying that there is no different treatment based on the gender of the individual students, making sure that we are honoring our students for the way that they choose to dress, and then making sure that it outlines those additional components, like headphones, backpacks, bags, and other areas that can be part of our overall dress code. And so, again, nothing has changed significantly since our last board meeting, and so, with that, I have you with this hopefully for passage tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, I'll ask, is there anyone ready to move this policy for approval this evening?
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Director Carter and a second by Director Polis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye in policy 547 about student dress and appearance, and Administrative Guideline 547.1 is approved. The next one is policy 608, education of students with disabilities.
All right, and so, you're seeing a second read. This policy outlines that it is our role and responsibility to educate all students, including students with disabilities, and so, this just clarifies that, clarifies definitions and updates in relation to statutory changes. And so, there are no significant changes to the policy outside of statutory changes, and so, we just have this for a second read for you tonight, not for passage, just for a review of those updates based on law.
And just for clarity, just, there, there's a lot of red line, and all those additions are, are in reaction, more or less, verbatim, to what, what statute.
Correct. Clarifying those updates.
Are there any other questions, clarifications?
I think in addition, it looks like it mirrors the MSBA model policy, too, that the changes match.
Any other questions, comments? All right, seeing none. Is anyone ready to move policy 608 for approval? I mean, for review.
Yeah, just a second read, so we don't have to move that one, we're good.
It sounded so like, oh, it's all clear, it would go, but, okay, second read. All right, thank you. Let's move on to new business, with policy 521, graduation requirements and administrative guidelines.
All right, and so, this one, will, we do anticipate some changes coming in, because this was, this has had multiple changes as we went through COVID, and have seen some minor changes over the past five years, so there will definitely be some updates. We also received some board, board questions in advance, so just kind of walking through, beginning on page 68, if you note. Temporary change to graduation requirements, ending in graduation year 2024, and so, that is going to end up being changed. One of the things to keep in mind as we look at credits earned is that schools across the entire state have a wide range of class periods in a given day. We are a seven-period-day school, which means that a student taking seven periods, seven periods, that's 14, you multiply that by four, and a student can have 56 credits over the course if they take a class each time. We do require 49 credits. It is typical that that is approximately the amount, so there's a seven extra-credit-opportunity window for our students. That proportion is, is within the range of what, what occurs pretty much around different schools. There are four-period days, five-period days, six-period days, and seven-period days that we are aware of, and so, the credits then typically go in connection to that. Couple of things that we will be gathering input on, the state typically changes requirements, and so, there's a personal finance course that is now required. We currently have, as I dug into this, eight credits of social studies, while technically there are only seven credits, or three and a half years of social studies required. That could be connected to personal finance, that's a conversation of why do we have that, that half-credit. There are two credits of physical education required in our district, there is one required essentially by the state, or the standards being caught. That is a question for us to examine and gather feedback on. Couple of questions I did receive from board members, so I did do some data, we have precisely zero students over the past three years that have not graduated due to elective credits, and there are zero students that have not graduated due to PE. So, basically, the extra PE or the elective credits have not been a barrier to any student and their graduation, and so, we don't have a history of those being a problem as, as we have investigated that. And so, typically, students who aren't graduating on time, it is usually due to the four, the core classes and the state-level requirements in those areas. We also have a service requirement, we do not have evidence of people who have had a problem graduating due to the hours of service. And so, we do have this for you, and that those couple of comments are, again, response to some of the questions that I had from board members, but we do anticipate gathering some input, both from the Teaching and Learning Department, the High School Counseling Team, but then also gathering some input on students, so we can hear the impact and thoughts in regard to where we might be different currently from the state and how students feel about that. So, with that, it's a first read, I'm open to any questions or comments today, otherwise, we anticipate this taking a few meetings.
Quick question, how are students able to, to rec, to see their graduation requirements, or how many credits they have? Because I see that has been taken off student view.
That is new information to me, and so, I did not know there was a technical challenge on student view that is challenging students with the number of credits they have. I see Dr. D. shaking her head, she will be on that and is taking notes, and we'll follow up on that tomorrow to find out that answer, and we'll get that cleaned up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The only thing I wanted to add was my opinion on, like, where the credit should go. I personally, social studies has been, like, one of the most, like, influential classes for me. I feel like that's where I've learned some, like, the most, like, amount of history and, like, understanding of the world and everything. So, I think getting rid of that, even though we are already above the state requirement, I don't think, personally, would be the best idea. I think where we'd find, like, the best place to put is the physical education. If kids want to, like, have physical education classes, they're going to have it. I've known, I've seen people with, like, four credits of that, so I think, you know, just limiting it to one, like, wouldn't tremendously hurt children compared to, like, taking away, like, this year I have political science, and I'm learning a lot in that class, honestly. So, like, imagine if I was a student that was, like, not incentivized to, like, take it, and now I, like, lost that opportunity, compared to, like, running in a gym, you know what I mean?
Sure, thank you.
That's my personal opinion, yeah.
Appreciate it.
But you could still do it within 16 elective courses. They are, they are, that's true. Yeah, 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 all true, all real, but that's, there's 49 required, and 50, you have space for 56, so you still have seven to play with. Are there groups, where do we get input on what to do with this? Or are we, is it administrative and?
So, we're going to start with administrative and counseling to make sure the regulations are there, but then also gathering input from our safe and supportive school groups and making sure that we gather some student input in that regard. And so, that's also one of the areas that we'll be asking our student board reps to, to help gather the voice of their student colleagues about, about what those requirements are. And we'll probably, and as they prep, as Mr. Carter asks, we'll really look at some of those areas, like, where are we different from the state requirements, and how do people feel about that, and, and what should we be thinking about as we make that decision?
I would echo Geraldo, what you mentioned about aligning with the state's standards for physical education down to one credit of that. I know in particular, our students that are in the dual-language program, that they lose a big chunk of their electives because they're electing to do dual-language, or students that decide to be in a music program for all four years, they're electing to take those fine arts programs for a lot of credits. And so, to give them a little bit more flexibility, I think, could be good to align with the state standards on it.
Do you have follow-up questions, Cassandra? No?
All right, so, this may not be one we do over the next two board meetings, just because there will be some substantial feedback and input, because that is one of the things that does definitely impact people across. This is also one we'll be checking with our Ed Richfield partners to have that conversation also.
I, I also want to make sure that we really engage our students into the, the thinking about this, because it's going to have an extremely direct impact. So, student reps, go out, talk to your friends and everybody, and let us know how.
And we'll have, as Dr. D. follows up with the principal, we will make sure that they have all the information that they need about where we're different, and so, we'll, we'll just clarify that, so we arm them with the information that they need to be successful.
I did have one follow-up question in regards to how we recognize credits from other places. You and I spoke today about, sometimes a student comes towards the end of secondary, we have to do the comparison of where they come in from a block schedule, are they coming from six credits, are they coming mid-semester, how do we count those up? And I'm curious, because I have seen for PSEO credits, that we recognize that you have to have at least four credits for it to count as a full credit here. So, as an example, at Normandale, if you take a four-credit class, that counts as, if it's social studies, if it's history, that counts as one of your social studies or two of your social studies credits. But if you take, I think Econ at Normandale is only three credits, so therefore, you have to take yet one more class to get to that level, so I'm curious if that's something that we should be looking at.
Yeah, one of the things that we discovered, and as we were going down that rabbit hole, was there probably needs to be a guideline to this particular policy that talks about, students from Minneapolis come in having a six-period day, and we have no guideline written in our, in our credit requirements that talk about what that is, because our requirements are based on our numbers. And so, it would be something that we will have to look into as we review this policy about how do we take in transfer credits, what does it count for if you take them at another institution, and how do we measure that in a way that accurately reflects within our, within our requirements, that's not currently noted. And as you all know, one of the goals is to have a policy and guidelines that follow our practice, and so, we found some practices that we do to make them equal, but there is no documentation at the board level of that, and so, we'll be creating that, too.
There is a transfer policy somewhere.
There is.
I know we've looked at, at how we recognize credit from other institutions, but it's...
Yeah, Credit for Learning, I believe, is the name of the policy. I, we'll have to double-check, and if it, if it does have it, we'll cross-reference.
But we should cross-reference and, and have, have truthfully broad discretion for the administration to make sense of it, because it, we couldn't possibly codify it, someone will have a different system than, than we anticipated.
Agreed.
Sounds good. We will go to work on that.
All right. Next one for a new business, commencement participation, policy 522.
All right, and so, 522 just outlines the expectations for commencement. So, basically, seniors need to have met the qualifications for diploma to participate in commencement. Then, there is, if there are significant disciplinary reasons, then it is reviewed by the high school principal and the superintendent. Those students may not end up in commencement, but that, we put in the safety check of both the high school principal and myself. I don't believe we have utilized that in five or six years, actually, I don't think we've done that in 10 years. That would be something very serious, and, you know, isn't something that we have, have done, but that is in there as a just-in-case. And then, participating students will be required to wear the prescribed cap and gown, and so, we do have caps and gowns. It does not note anything in relation to stalls, as we are aware of, and so, those are acceptable, and then it also does not say anything about decor in regard to the cap, which people have feelings about that, but those are not laid out in policy, which does allow for, for those things. Then, seniors who do not choose to participate in commencement can still participate in senior class activities, and so, that also is something that if there were questions, would be reviewed by both the high school principal and the superintendent. So, we have that for a first read tonight. We'll also be gathering and taking input on that as we go through our couple reads.
Any initial comments about this one? Oops. Okay. We look forward to seeing that one next time.
Sounds good.
Aye, move to donations.
All right, so we have one today, Richfield Middle School Music Department received a donation of a flute valued at $500 from Mark Ralston of Minneapolis, so thank you to Mark Ralston of Minneapolis.
Wonderful. Is anyone ready to move this donation forward for approval?
I move that we accept the donation with gratitude.
All right, well, second.
We have a motion by Director Polis and a second by Director Spencer. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and we accept this donation with gratitude. Thank you so very much. We get to advanced planning with Legislative Update Agenda item.
Well, we have, we'll start with the small things, we have a study session with our city council at our next meeting, at which time, after that, we will begin a conversation as a board about our own legislative platform, because the Minnesota Legislative Session starts in early 2025, and so, it will be a budget year in the state of Minnesota, and so, something for us to begin those conversations about. We typically go through, through read, three reads of that before a study session with our state legislators. And obviously, as you all know, and we sent out a communication this weekend, there is an election tomorrow. Presidential elections tend to cause significant emotions around our city, state, and our country, and so, we are aware of that and are making sure that we are putting in all these systems of support for our students and for our staff to make sure that, as the tension goes across our country, whatever the outcome, that we are prepared to do our best and continue on with a great day and great set of days in school.
So, so, the annual Minnesota School Board Association Delegate Assembly is coming up in less than a month, and that is really, it's an event I look forward to attending every year, because it's really meaningful to be able to be there and help guide the, the legislative platform for the Minnesota School Board Association. So, let's see what that brings, I will keep you posted when it's over.
If I can think of anything to share to help, help you contribute, I'll, I'll let you know.
Thank you. I look forward to that, yes. I would also be happy to share the, the packet in advance of the things that will be discussed, too, in case you want to...
Yeah, the, the one thing I feel very confident, I will be pushing for us on our legislative platform, and it is very specific to Richfield Public Schools and the schools that we are aware of. So, compensatory education and Title I are funded through the mechanism by which students and families have historically qualified for free and reduced lunch. There are two methods by which that happens, one is called direct certification, it happens automatically, and one is called a free and reduced lunch form. Since everyone is receiving free breakfast and free lunch, the forms being completed and people qualifying and in connection with direct certification has dropped significantly. And so, we are aware of both us and districts around the state, who have a large percentage of fewer students qualifying for free and reduced lunch, which means that those other funding dollars that go to serve those students are possibly being reduced quite significantly. And so, it is very likely to be on our platform, it's been on our platform in the past, to create a permanent solution to determining for compensatory education funding and our Title I funding. Right now, it would look like we are somewhere in the range of $2 million fewer to serve students in poverty than we had last year. There are a bunch of complex formulas that will occur at the state level, but it looks also like we are between 10 and 15% free and reduced. and reduced lunch count lower than we had been in the past, which is predictable and had occurred in COVID, when free and reduced lunch was not tied to free breakfast and free food. And so this is something that is a long-term systemic problem that Minnesota created a short-term solution for, and need to create a long-term solution for.
Absolutely.
It even seems like, still calling it free and reduced lunch when lunch is all free, like, it's almost like free and discounted services, because it does bleed into like, athletic fees and several other things that happen within our school district that people can apply for and get free or reduced cost for.
Sounds like marketing is part of the approach.
Yeah. Why would I fill this out? My kid already gets free lunch, right?
And there are highly complex forms that require a social security number and your income, and a, honestly, a certain amount of faith in the system that that, that documentation will be used ethically and morally. And so it is, it is particularly challenging.
I think during COVID, we've, I mean, system-wide, it wasn't just us. I mean, we had probably a 10 to 15% change, right? It went from about 63 to 65% free and reduced lunch to 50%. And it wasn't because we got magically more wealthy as a community. And then when the forms were required, again, it moved right back up. And so I imagine, if we were requiring forms, would, would probably be even lower than the 50% for, for participation. But that's, that's a guess.
All right, thank you. Information and questions from board members?
I did have Board Member Carter point out, in addition to our football team and our players supporting the Malaca seniors, our booster clubs were also integral to that, so we also want to thank our booster club for that. So we, again, many people making us as a system very proud.
All right, suggested our future agenda items to present, or to request. I see none. Let me share with all of you our future meeting dates. We will meet again November 18th, 2024, starting an hour and a half earlier that day, because of our board study session with the Richfield City Council at 5:30 p.m., immediately followed by a regular board meeting with public comment at 7 o'clock. And the next meeting is scheduled for December 2nd, 2024, at 7 p.m. And this one will include our Truth in Taxation Report.
And it will include public comment relating to the truth in taxation.
That's great, Aaron. Thank you so much, yes. Yeah, this is, this is an opportunity for our community to hold us accountable to the tax-paid investments in our kids. Okay, so we will be now moving into closed session, following a vote, as allowed by Minnesota Statute 13D03, for labor negotiation strategy. At that point, the meeting will only be reopened for adjournment, so this basically means that as of now, the business of this meeting has concluded. Is anyone ready to move, to enter in, to make a motion to enter into closed session?
So moved.
I'll second, assuming that you meant that, so moved, as allowed by Statute 13D03.
Well, thank you for repeating. I was ready, then she said the whole thing, I was like-
I know, it's a-
All right, we have a motion by Director Carter and a second by Director Polis. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, and we are entering into closed session, as allowed by Minnesota Statute 13D03, at 8:15 p.m., for labor negotiation strategy.
Like they were sticky?
Something. So I, I brought in my, my hand sanitizer. Like, actually, like, as you were coming in-